Meeting, regular meeting of the Nags Head Board of The we'll begin with a moment of silence this morning. I'd ask you to please give a thought to especially the victims of the hurricane. For the grace of God, go we. And they're having a pretty rough time down there. And now if you'll stand as you're able and join me at the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in the physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt or amend the agenda?
May I like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a closed session during the attorney portion of the schedule to protect the client attorney privilege.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Then that brings us to recognitions and we'll start with Chief.
Morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Good morning.
It's my pleasure to come before you today to recognize Master Police Officer Daniel Danny Harris, who has five years of service with the town. Danny joined our agency in 2017 after spending five and a half years with the Dare County Sheriff's Department. Danny brought a great deal of knowledge, excuse me, and prides himself in continuing his training with our agency and is always looking for opportunities to further himself. Danny is highly motivated and is always willing to help other officers along with all other town staff when asked and called upon. In his free time, Danny enjoys hunting, fishing, and most importantly, spending time camping with his fiancee Stephanie and his little girl Danielle. Danny, thank you for your five years of service.
Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is Fire Prevention Week. Chief?
Morning, Mayor, distinguished commissioners. October 9th through the 15th of 2022 brings us to our annual Fire Prevention Week. This year commemorates the 100th anniversary of Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week was started back by the National Fire Protection Association in 1922 to commemorate the Great Chicago Fire, an event that lasted from October 10th through the October 8th through the 10th, 1871. Fire destroyed 17,000 buildings and structures and took around 300 lives. It cost $200 million in damage, and today that's about 4.4 billion. 1925, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed the first Fire Prevention Week to occur between October 4th through the 10th in 1925. Fire Prevention Week is now celebrated every year during this week on October 9th. This year's Fire Prevention Week theme is Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape. It is timely important today. Today's house fires burn faster and hotter than ever before. Time is essential to a good outcome. When your storm goes off, having a plan on what to do is important to the town. Every member of the family must know and understand the plan for getting out of the house and where to meet once they are out. The key to any good plan is to practice it, so I encourage our citizens to come up with a fire escape plan and to practice it regularly. This year, we're happy to host our Fire Prevention Week Open House Night at the Douglas A. Ramali Fire Station 16 on Thursday, October 13th. The event starts at 3:00 PM and will end at 7:30 PM. We'll have food, games, static displays, and lots of activities. We hope everyone in the community will come and join us for a night of fun and education. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will read now the proclamation declaring Fire Prevention Week, October 9th through 15th. Whereas the town of Nags Head is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all of those living and visiting our town, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of smoke alarms and knows how to respond, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas residents should make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape effectively serves to remind us that it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now therefore, be it resolved that October 9th through 15th, 2022 is Fire Prevention Week, and I urge all the people of the town of Nags Head to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week 2022 and to support the public safety of the Nags Head Fire Department. All town residents and visitors are the annual Nags Head Fire Rescue Open House held at the Douglas A. Ramali Fire Station 16 on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, this being the fifth day of October. And a motion to adopt the proclamation would be in order?
Same moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you. That brings us to public comment. And before we go into public comment, Mr. Leidy, I have a couple of questions. Oh, I'm sorry. John, I blew right past you. My apologies.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Kahoon and Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. I'm John Harris, president of the Regallo Foundation. Our board members are Susie Walters, Sandra Allen, G W Meadows, Bruce Weaver, and Carol Regallo Sparks. Some of them are present here today. And this is Billy Vaughn, who's writing a book on the Regallos. We formed the Regallo Foundation in 1992 with one of the objectives being to build a museum to tell the story. The museum will tell the story of the invention of the Regallo Wing, which led to hang gliding, paragliding, sport parachuting, delta kites, stunt kites, and kiteboarding. The museum will also tell the history of these air sports. As you know, the Regallos owned a house in Southern Forest for many years and became permanent residents of Dare County after retiring from NASA in 1972. Talking to North Carolina State Parks about this project for over five years, it was derailed by COVID, like so many other projects. In 2018, we worked with Jockeys Ridge State Park to select a site and architectural rendering for the museum concept. The foundation's proposal to North Carolina State Parks is if they'll give the foundation a long-term lease at no cost, then the foundation will raise the money to build the museum and operate the museum going forward. It's about estimated about 12,000 square feet, so small museum. Our ballpark estimate of the cost is $7 million. We meet with North Carolina Parks on October 20th to begin working on the lease. We are asking for your support for this project. And in the future, we would like to see a resolution supporting the project, the concept of the museum, and the long-term lease with North Carolina State Parks. We see this museum as inspirational. The Regallo story is very inspiring, as you're going to learn in a few here. And we see the museum as an of Nags Head to Jockeys Ridge State Park, to Dare County, and to the state of North Carolina. Thank you.
So I'm going to do this fairly quickly. Bear with me. So Francis and Gertrude Regallo, if you didn't know, invented the flexible wing in 1948. This invention was remarkable. It had no rigid structures whatsoever, no spars, no stiffeners, but it maintains its shape in flight and produces lift like a conventional rigid wing. This flexible wing evolved into all kinds of flying hang gliders and paragliders, weight shift ultralights, sport aircraft, delta kites, stunt kites, modern parachutes, and most recently kiteboard kites, just another flexible wing. And these wings have allowed millions of people all over the world to enjoy flight in its most pure form. We're not advancing. Oh, it's a scroll. Got it. Oh, come on now. Bear with me. I can be fast, but not that fast. All right. This is going to be a little awkward. So Francis Regallo was born in Sanger, California, in 1912, received his graduate degree in aeronautical engineering from Stanford in 1935, and went to work at the tunnels at the NACA, which was the precursor to NASA, right up here in Hampton, Virginia. And during World War II, they were doing drag cleanup studies of all the aircraft that saw combat. And what Regallo saw was airplane faster, more complicated, harder to fly, and way more expensive. And he thought it just wasn't fair that only millionaires in the military had access to aviation. He thought everyone should be able to fly. In fact, his design idea was this. He thought, wouldn't it be great if you could drive your car to the outskirts of town and unfold a wing out of the trunk and fly away? Yeah, we never quite got the flying car, but that idea of a wing that you could fold up got him thinking about it. And he and his wife did this work on their own time. Gertrude actually sewed the first one. This is the first one they got flying in 1948. She sewed that up out of abandoned kitchen curtains. And like I said, they did this at home on their own time. He actually built a small wind tunnel in the house to test these things. And he knew what the possibilities were immediately of what was possible with this thing. As early as 1949, he said, imagine the thrill of carrying such a wing to the top of a mountain and gliding into the valley below. But because he was a civil servant working for the federal government, it belonged to the government. And he took it to his bosses and showed them what he had, and they said, you know, we don't see any use for this thing. You can have it, which allowed them to patent the flexible wing. And I always like to point out that Gertrude's name is on that patent first. She was instrumental in all of this. So they in 1951. And as a way to illustrate the concept, to try to get Regallo called real aeronautical interest in the idea, they went into the kite business. These things were great kites. You could fly them. They flew as gliders, but they also flew as kites. And you could rig them with two strings for one of the first, like our modern stunt kites. But as a way to illustrate the concept, to try to get real aeronautical interest in the idea, it totally backfired because it was a toy. No one took it seriously. So for 10 years, while Regallo continued his work at the NACA with all kinds of work, he did a lot of lateral control work and over 20 patents in his life. But for 10 years, they sold these things as toy kites until finally what happened was Sputnik happened. And anybody recognize this guy? It was actually Werner von Braun. He's the famous rocket engineer. He came up from the Alabama facility where he was working to Langley Field, and he happened to see Regallo demonstrate one of these little gliders like he had 1,000 times before. And what von Braun saw was the possibility of recovering rocket booster engines and radio controlled gliding them back to land. And just the simple fact that von Braun showed interest in this, he actually summoned Regallo's team to Huntsville for two days of talks. This guy, von Braun, was the face of the space race. So him giving kite idea, the floodgates opened, and the federal government spent over 160 million in the 1960s doing flexible wing research for all kinds of stuff. This was an early test of the rocket booster recovery. This thing was called a fleet. It was a flying jeep. It's a precursor to our modern ultralights. It's hard to appreciate. That's a full-sized aircraft engine on that. And that is a classic Regallo wing. We still teach with those on Jockeys Ridge to this day that look very much like that wing. This application was called a precision drop glider. You could tow that carry a payload, kind of like you'd carry a boat behind your truck, increase the payload helicopter could carry, plus you could release the line and radio controlled glide them down. The Army loved this. They could supply troops without committing aircraft to them. These are some, this is one of the first of the truly controllable parachutes. The Golden Knights jumped these things in the 1960s and did live flights with them, and they really liked them a lot because they were truly maneuverable. You could pinpoint land. You could do maneuvers on the way down. This little glider was called a Paracet. They called all these things paragliders. This was a paragliding research vehicle. And what they were doing with this was towing it behind an airplane. They eventually towed it as high as 12,000 feet and glided it down. And what they were doing was training astronauts. Buzz Aldrin flew this, Neil Armstrong, Jack Swigert, Geek Slaton. The reason they were training astronauts to fly flexible wings is that the very big idea they had was to recover spacecraft with these. And Apollo programs were supposed to be recovered by a paraglide. And the idea was fairly simple. You pack this thing up like a parachute, put the guys in space, they do their mission, reenter the atmosphere and deploy this thing. But now they got something that flies. They can control it and they can land it on land. And the astronauts loved the idea. You know, they were our best test pilots and they hated not having control coming down. This is one of the tests they did on tow, towing that up behind a helicopter. But we Regallo came down under parachutes. Well, what happened was be on the moon by the end of the decade. And they did fly it through its whole sequence. It would have worked had they been able to spend more time on it. But the reason I'm telling the whole story is that pictures like this of the fleet were in Popular Science and Popular Mechanics. And people all over the world saw these Regallo wings and said, that's really simple. I could build one of those. And that's exactly where the funding comes from. Some of the first guys were Australian water skiers in the early 60s. They were towing their flat kites behind their boats to get in the air. And they were getting in the air, but they weren't really flying. If the rope ever went slack, they would crash. But from a photograph of one of these, they built one out of banana plastic and conduit. And they're the guys that figured out to put a triangle underneath it and use weight shift to control them. So hang gliding, as we practice it today, owes a lot to the Australians. But hang gliding in the 70s, Jockeys Ridge in the early 70s, that is a bamboo and plastic Jockeys Ridge figured heavily in the early history of hang gliding. And Francis was well aware of this place. He had been traveling here before he moved here to use Jockeys Ridge as a natural wind laboratory. He actually called it that. This is some experiments they did with completely flexible paragliders. And I believe that's 1967 or 68 on Jockeys Ridge. And when the park was being formed, or the idea of the park was first hatched, where's my cursor? There we go. This is an early shot of Jockeys hang gliding meet, the first national meet in 1973. We just had our 50th annual hang gliding spectacular. It's the longest continually held hang gliding competition in the world on Jockeys Ridge. And you can see how many people there were there. But back to that park idea, Francis Regallo actually lobbied for there to be a wind research facility in the park because he called it a natural wind laboratory. That never panned out, but it's a great idea. Modern hang gliders have evolved into sophisticated soaring aircraft. They're capable of flights measured in hours and altitudes. My personal best are over 12,500 feet. I've gone 50 miles cross country and had a four and a half hour flight, and those numbers are small. So hang gliding has really evolved. This is another iteration. These are technically now light sport aircraft. We call them trikes, but that's one of the more affordable ways into personal aviation. Paragliders all come out of the same invention. A paraglider is a completely flexible wing like the original ones that Regallo lobbied for. That's actually out on Jockeys Ridge. Delta kites, sport kites, stunt kites, traction kites, modern parachutes, and again, kiteboarding. And I would argue that this place on the Outer Banks, we see more iterations of flexible wings on a regular basis than anyplace else in the world. I can't, I can't think of anyplace that's even close. So the Regallo Foundation, I won't read the whole slide, but basically formed in 1992 as a nonprofit task to tell the story. That's my part of telling the story, but also as part of a long-range plans to establish a museum. And I was absolutely floored to see the artifacts that are already on hand that are being stored with John. We can really tell this story and do it justice. And Jockeys Ridge State Park is the logical spot. So years ago, and I've forgotten the year, I've gone off my notes here, but 2018, the Regallo Foundation hired Evoque Architecture to do site analysis. Three sites were considered and aesthetics and infrastructure, what the views would be like, flooding, huge analysis. Site two was kind of designated, and they came up with these renderings. This would be the front of the museum. Absolutely gorgeous. John's idea was the big awning there in the shape of the hang glider. The back of the museum will actually have an observation deck that will be tall be just east of the visitor's center, close to parking lot and the existing structures. The inside of the building would be a ramp structure. If you've ever been to the Ubarhazy Center out at Dulles, it will be a little baby version of that where you can walk around. There'll be exhibits along the walls, and there'll be suspended full-sized aircraft throughout the museum. There'll also be a small theater, a small gift shop. And I would just like to end with the contributions that the Regallos made to personal aviation. I think it's best kept secret in aviation, and it's not just hang gliding. There's this whole family of flexible wings, and no one knows the story. And this is the place to tell it. He was so deeply bonded with not only the community here, but the formation of Jockeys Ridge State Park and the use of Jockeys Ridge State Park as that natural wind laboratory. So thank you for your attention. Oh, I'm supposed to remind everybody that the Regallo Foundation's big fundraiser's coming up October 22nd. We have the Brutog down here at the event site. If you've never seen it, it's an absolute hoot. We actually fly empty mini kegs off a two-tiered scaffold to see you can fly them the farthest. It's really great fun. So I hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Thank you. Now that does bring us to public comment. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Leidy. And with the suggestion that we have several things to read into the record, we'll wait and do that after everyone who's present has had an opportunity to speak and then just let them be dismissed. And then we can read whatever needs to be read.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at this time, the board welcomes members of the public to provide public comment to the board. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to public comment, but it is an opportunity for members who are here to provide any sorts of concerns or matters of interest that you wish to address to the board. I will point out that there are no public hearings today. And so if you are here to provide comment on any of the agenda items, including the in at Whalebone matter, which is going to be considered by the board later in the meeting, this is the time to provide those comments, since we're not having a public hearing. But for those who wish to provide comment, if you'll please approach the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your comments to the board. And I will also be the timekeeper, and I will let you know when your time is just about up.
David Bragg, Nags Head. I lived in New Orleans. My wife lived in Portsmouth, and both of us seen what low income turns into. Starts out nice, and with a few years, it becomes an eyesore. We didn't retire here to make it just another typical city. More on this when it's on the agenda, but I do plan to further research it and speak about it more. The main reason for me attending today is a 90-room hotel, which I totally oppose. First, after reviewing the parking requirements, I believe there are 94 spaces required, six for employees, southern as I see it, for handicap spaces, where the EV charging stations, after all, everybody up there wants to have electric energy, so I'd like to see EV spaces in there because we don't have money around Nags Head. The way I look at it, added, it leaves 81 spaces. I haven't seen the design of the rooms, but if you have, say, two double beds or two queen beds in each room, and people come down separately, that's two at least per room. Where are these overflow parking people going to be parking? Don't have an answer to that, at least as I've seen it, because I don't have, I was not totally prepared for this because I was on vacation and came back late. The parking study, or the traffic study done in September? Yeah, right. Okay, let's talk about it. Do it in July. I've been to that gas station. I've sat at that corner for 10, 12 minutes before I could turn left to get back onto 158 to get home. Where's that study? People in that neighborhood are going to be sitting there for long term before they could get back or get out of their neighborhood. It's ridiculous to do a study about parking, about traffic in September. Do it in July, in August, when it's high season. Talking about runoff, I see where the runoff's going to go, to the golf course, which already gets flooded, to the back of the neighborhood, which already gets flooded, to the road, which already gets flooded. It's ridiculous. I don't know who did the study, but it's wrong. I was going to couple this with the low-income housing that's going to be there. Did Dominion provide a study about grid usage? As I understand it, the government wants to go to wind and solar. By the way, wind is going to kill the fishing, commercial fishing industry around here. So I vote no to that. What we also have to look at is, we don't want to become California. I don't want rolling blackouts in my neighborhood. I don't want to have to live at 78 degrees in the summer and 62 degrees in the winter because our governor wants to have the Green New Deal in North Carolina. So we need to see what this, how these two projects will affect the grid. I would also wonder, what's the acceptable number of people per square mile? When we have all these people here in the summertime, we are already overflowed in the restaurants. We have food shortages at the stores, and we have terrible traffic problems. Where's the study on people per square mile in the summer and how it's going to affect the residents of Nags Head and the Outer Banks in general? For the reasons I cited above, I believe this project should be stopped, and the area in question should be used for another purpose for the good of the citizens of Nags Head. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
My name is Michael Bryan. I live in Nags Head. I'm here today as chairman of board of Friends of Jockeys Ridge. What I want to do is read a letter that I wrote to Brian Strong, Deputy Director, Planning and Natural Resources, Division of Parks Recreation in Raleigh, North Carolina, dated September 26, 2022. Dear Mr. Strong, recently, a news article appeared in the Outer Banks Voice about renewed efforts to develop the Regallo Museum at Jockeys Ridge. The Friends of Jockeys Ridge received a number of inquiries from board members, friends, members, and concerned citizens about the potential of this development at Jockeys Ridge State Park. While the Regallo Museum would be a wonderful tribute to the Regallos, the Friends of Jockeys Ridge have concerns regarding its location. As the Friends of Jockeys Ridge, our mission is to support, enhance, and promote Jockeys Ridge State Park as a significant geological feature of the Outer Banks, North Carolina. Does this project support, enhance, and promote Jockeys Ridge? Friends of Jockeys Ridge would like to learn more about this project, the timeline, impacts of Jockeys Ridge, and Friends of Jockeys Ridge, how we can get more information on the current status, and how the project impacts of this project, what the benefit of the museum and the park is, what is the impact to the park in terms of preservation? Is there a completed environmental impact assessment to address the building degradation, concerns of traffic, tree removal from maritime forest, impacts to wildlife, and dangerous species, and wind distribution intrusion? How will sand preservation be managed? And will this project affect the movement of the sand? Will this project lead to further commercial development? Based on the article presented to the Arcatic Commissioners, we received numerous concerns that the lease agreement is imminent with the Regallo Foundation. We have received concern messages about lack of transparency, lack of public input, and positive negative environmental impacts. Is this agreement imminent? What is the process for this agreement? As a major contributor to the well-being of Jockeys Ridge State Park, we should be a part of the conversation. And I put my phone number and email. Well, thank you for your time. It's yearly Michael Bryan, Chairman of the Board of Friends of Jockeys Ridge. From a personal standpoint, my name is Michael Bryan. I live at 2820 Southos Colony Drive, Nags Head. In 1973, Carolista Baum sat in front of a bulldozer, and I believe we were happy she did. I am. She stopped development at Jockeys Ridge, and we can all agree, that was a good thing. I sell lumber for a living, so I'm not against development. Carolista was not against development, and we can all agree, we made a good living here because of this development. But do we want commercial development in Jockeys Ridge State Park? I do not. And I would ask and urge the Nags Head Board Commissioners to consider drafting a resolution against commercial development in Jockeys Ridge State Park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Is there anybody else?
Good morning. Good morning. Excuse me. My name is Carolista. I live in Raleigh, North Carolina, but I do own property in Nags Head. And I ask permission to add my comments into the record. I am speaking against the development at Jockeys Ridge State Park as presented today through the museum request, and also speaking against development in the future. I am one of Carolista Baum's three children who ran home the summer of 1973 to report to her that there was a bulldozer taking sand off the back of the ridge. Carolista went back to the ridge, confronted the operator of the machine, and demanded that it be shut down. The bulldozer operator left, and Mom removed the distributor cap. And with that, began the movement to preserve Jockeys Ridge from development. The entire effort was to preserve The entire effort was to preserve Jackie's Ridge as a natural landmark forever. This request to lease park land and build on Jackie's Ridge, which is not only a North Carolina state park, but also carries a national natural landmark designation, is 100% against why Jackie's Ridge was preserved in the first place. Dare County Commissioners passed a resolution at their September 6 meeting in support of construction in Nagseth on Jackie's Ridge State Park, but there was no notice to residents or stakeholders regarding this action. And with this second request before the town of Nagseth for a resolution in support, I ask that you consider a resolution whereby no future development happens at Jackie's Ridge other than the improvement and maintenance of the existing state facilities. Carolista and others raised money and organized the campaign Save Our Sand Dune. In addition to organizing people to preserve Jackie's Ridge, it was all in an effort to stop development on the ridge. The reason for preserving the dunes in 1973 needs to be reiterated again today. Almost 50 years later, Jackie's Ridge was preserved to be a scenic and natural landmark for the people. If we don't remember this, then history will most certainly repeat itself. And this museum request will not be the only attempt in years to come to commercialize the dune. Children collected medals and dimes. Volunteers spent countless hours collecting signatures, selling $5 square footage certificates, working tirelessly to raise not only money for awareness to save Jackie's Ridge, but residents and stakeholders alike work to preserve this natural geological resource. Their efforts were not in vain as the state of North Carolina General Assembly appropriated funds to create Jackie's Ridge as a state park in 1975. We have an incredible natural landmark in Jackie's Ridge, which is the most visited state park in North Carolina. And quoting from the website of the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, "The primary goal of the Division of Parks and Recreation, especially the Natural Resources Program, is to ensure long-term protection of state parks as intact." This statement says it all. I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, to be stewards of this landmark inside your jurisdiction and to uphold the mission statement of the Friends of Jackie's Ridge to support, enhance and promote Jackie's Ridge State Park as a significant geological feature of the Outer Banks by declining this and future requests that dilute the purpose of the ridge. To that end, Commissioners, I ask that no development be considered at Jackie's Ridge. I ask that you preserve the ecological information, the environmental integrity, the wildlife habitats, the multiple plant species and the maritime forests surrounding Jackie's Ridge by declining this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Baum. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'll keep this brief. My name is Basil Belches. My wife and I live on South Memorial Avenue, near the intersection of Holwell and 158. There's a large empty parcel right there right now, and that's why I wanted to speak. Back in March, I read in the Outer Banks Voice that Wota Cooper and Dare County had partnered to build affordable housing. And one of those locations was in Manio. They provided the address. And then they said an undisclosed location in Nagseth. I've heard lots of hearsay and rumors and there's some mystery about it, but I understand that vacant lot in Holwell, 158, excuse me, is the location for this affordable housing project. I provided my comments along with my wife to the board and mayor yesterday. So I won't go through those now, but I just wanted to make sure. And it wasn't on the agenda, which is why I'm speaking now. I wanted to make sure that the board and the mayor were aware of this and were looking at it. And I'm sure you'll be getting some other comments. I know several residents are worried about the negative effect on property value and lots of other concerns. So I would urge the board to please look at this carefully before any more is undertaken. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right. Does anybody else wish to address the board? Yes, Mr. White.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Stan White, live at 460 Villadue's Drive. As you can imagine, I'm standing here today to support the hotel being proposed in Whalebone. But a lot of you know, I was born and raised here and I have seen the demise of individual hotel rooms. And the Outer Banks used to be a place that people could come spend one or two days to find out if this is the place they wanted to come and spend a week. A lot of people cannot afford $3,000, $4,000, $12,000, $15,000 per week when they're first experiencing the Outer Banks. So I think hotels are a needed amenity for the Outer Banks, not only for Nagseth. I'm sure anybody that's been keeping up with this advice is that I own that particular piece of property. And I had planned to build a hotel there myself several years ago. I have developed several things in Nagseth and I know what the process is and I know how long it takes. I did have five associates draw up a site plan for a hotel, sat down and came up with a timeline of things that I needed to do to get approval with the town of Nagseth. One approval, I forgot to think about, was from my wife. She said, no. She said I was too old to build a hotel. So that's where that project ended at that time. But I do think hotels are something that are needed in Nagseth. I've looked at this particular project. I think the building is a very attractive building, meets what I call the guidelines of Nagseth. And I think Nagseth would be extremely proud to have that facility within its banks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Is there any other comment for the board? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session, except for the comments that the mayor is going to read.
Right. All right. Thank you. So we have a number of comments to read into the record this morning. Three of those relate to Jackie's Ridge. And so I'll read those first in case the folks who are here, the remainder of those are on a topic that's not on the agenda today and not otherwise represented in the room. So we'll go to those last. The first is a letter from Bob Muller, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm sorry that I'm not able to be with you to present my thoughts in person. I appreciate the opportunity to have this letter read into the record. You have a request for support from John Harris and the Regala Foundation on your agenda this morning. I hope that you have delayed action on this item until at least the public, at least until public comment, to allow interested parties to share their views. For your own protection, I ask that you not adopt a resolution in support of the museum. It has been presented to you with sketch plans and design details. Adopting a resolution of support would immediately create an appearance of bias in support of a project that should come to the town for review, approval and oversight. Further, even if the town wants to take a position on the museum, it is quite premature. There are many questions about building and operating the museum inside a state natural area that should be answered before the town adopts an official position about the proposed museum, if such a position is deemed appropriate. Those questions include, but are not limited to, one, is the proposed use consistent with the mission of the park? Two, is the proposed use consistent with the park's designation as a national natural landmark and the terms of its acquisition using state funds and funds from the United States Bureau of Outdoor Recreation? Will the museum be operated by the state or the Regala Foundation? If the latter, what precedent is there for the private use of state park land for use not essentially related to the park and where a location within the park is not essential to its operation? Is the museum a commercial concession? If so, it is essential that the concession be constructed in the park with the associated destruction of the natural resource for the concession to operate. That is a question. Could it be operated equally well outside the park? If it could operate outside the park, then why is it necessary that it be in the park? If the museum is a commercial concession, will there be a public bid process for the construction and operation of a museum in the park? This would occur with any other public concession. If the museum is not a commercial concession, then what role does it play in the park? Is a location in the park essential for the museum to meet its mission? If the museum is built, who will own the museum's structure and displays? If the museum is built, what guarantees that the foundation will be able to operate and maintain the museum and that the museum will not become a burden on the state? Will an environmental impact statement be prepared before permits are issued? What public input will be solicited before permits are issued? Will the museum be subject to town zoning and other town rules and regulations as would any other private museum constructed on private property? If not, what justifies the exemption beyond the location of the museum inside the park? Look behind you. The town seal shows Jackie's Ridge. It is essential to the identity of the town, as much so as our beaches and maritime forest. Jackie's Ridge was purchased with state and federal funds, yes, but also with the pennies, nickels and dimes of thousands of North Carolina schoolchildren, coins collected to preserve an amazing natural resource, not to provide land for a private museum. Personally, I do not believe that a museum to Francis Regala, while an admirable objective, needs to be located within Jackie's Ridge State Park. Personally, I believe such a facility could be constructed on private land. I ask that you thoroughly investigate this proposal before you take any action regarding the museum. I ask that you immediately contact state parks and discuss with state parks their view of the appropriateness of the proposed development and to what extent the museum will comply with town rules and regulations. Thank you for your consideration and your service to the community. This is from George Barnes. George is present today but is not able to speak. And so I will read this statement for, on his behalf. Dear Secretary Wilson, as the first superintendent of Jackie's Ridge State Park, now retired and resident of Nagseth, I, along with many other citizens of Nagseth and Dare County and business owners, are concerned to learn of a recent Dare County Commissioners' meeting on September 6, 2022. John Harris of Kitty Hawk Kites, also president of the Regala Foundation, presented to the Dare County Commissioners that he had state support for the Regala Museum building site at Jackie's Ridge State Park. It was through a newspaper report in the Voice of the Outer Banks found here with the wink that this move is to construct a 12,000-square-foot building. It is my understanding that the lease negotiation meeting scheduled for Friday, September 30, 2022, was postponed to a later date. While I am not against the museum per se, I am only against anything being built within the acreage of Jackie's Ridge State Park, which is also a designated national natural landmark. We request to be included in all communications and/or actions that directly impact the environmental integrity of Jackie's Ridge State Park. Additionally, we request that any pending meetings and specifically lease negotiations be tabled until such time that an environmental impact study can be completed and shared with affected citizens. We would also appreciate transparency of previous discussions by any North Carolina State Agency, agency for or with Mr. Harris's businesses and/or foundations, et cetera, as to entrance, development leases, memoranda fees and use of current visitor center facilities now in place at Jackie's Ridge State Park. Finally, we request the past five years revenue statements from 2017 to current for the Jackie's Ridge slash Kitty Hawk Kites lease as to verify that the 8% lease agreement has been dispersed and verified through the financial statements produced to the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources. Any and all future meetings for lease negotiations and/or memoranda should not proceed or be executed outside of an environmental impact study, a traffic study, a wildlife study and a wind study. The third and final letter, I'm sorry, that is a second copy of the same statement. So I am not aware that I have any other statements to read on either the hotel or the Jackie's Ridge State Park.
All right.
But we have a number to read on other, on other topics. So Mr. Belches spoke earlier, and so I will not read his comments into the record this morning. This is from Sharon DeLora. Dear Board of Commissioners, we own a beach home at 3624 South Virginia Dare Trail, Nagseth. The property behind us and several other homeowners in this area is undeveloped. It has come to our attention that the county is working with Wota Cooper to build low-income housing on this parcel of land. We and many other property owners feel this area is not the best fit for such a development as it would adversely the Board of Commissioners feels the same way and denies the request for such development on this parcel of land. The proposed property is right across the street and denies the request for such a development on this parcel of land. The proposed property is right across the street from a major tourist attraction, Jackie's Ridge, and has direct access to the beach. We feel that more single-family homes on this property is a better use of this highly valued parcel of land and would generate more revenue for the city. This is from Chess Harris. Dear Mayor Kahoon, we live at 3541 South Memorial, just across Holwell from the planned development of the vacant lot to the south into a low-income neighborhood. We live here. This is our home. We are appalled with this drastic housing devaluation initiative and pray that common sense and commitment of our Nagseth government leadership will prevail to your tax-paying citizens in vote. This multifamily, low-income dwellings abutting on high-value, single-family are a recipe for property devaluation and crime to tap just a few of the looming issues. Please do not let this bad initiative gain momentum. This is from Susan Kaywin. To Mayor Ben Kahoon, Mayor Pro Tem Mike Sears and Commissioners, attached as a letter, excuse me, that we would like to give your attention regarding housing units in Nagseth. It has been brought to our attention that the roughly 100 essential and workforce housing units under a partnership with Dare County and the Ohio-based firm Wota Cooper may be constructed on property at the intersection of Route 158 and East Holwell Street. We are most concerned and disturbed about this as we are property owners of a home located directly across the street, 104 East Holwell, from this site. In a March article in the Nagseth Voice website, it was reported that this project is eligible for the low-income housing tax credit, which subsidizes the acquisition and construction of affordable housing for low- to moderate-income households. It was slated for sites on Roanoke Island as well as a not-yet-disclosed location in Nagseth. While we realize there's a need for affordable housing to maintain a workforce in the Outer Banks, we are opposed to its location at Route 158 and East Holwell Street. We feel we have been kept in the dark as to what this undisclosed Nagseth location would be. First off, this location is very near the entrance of Jackie's Ridge and possibly one of the most major attractions on the Outer Banks. Make a right turn on Carolista from Route 158 South and you enter this national landmark. Make a left turn on East Holwell Street from Route 158 South and you enter Old Nagseth Place and a neighborhood that is comprised of full-time residents and non-resident property owners who very much value and maintain a respectful quality of life that is most attractive and desirable to renters. We know because we are non-resident property owners who rent our home during June, July and August to returning families who know that when they put their hard-earned monies down on a summer home to spend quality time with their own families, they can rest assured that they will enjoy peace and relaxation. They can enjoy the hot tub and in-ground pool, walk to the nearby beach access, which has a lifeguard, walk across to Jackie's Ridge and even enjoy a walk around the corner to Snowbird's for some cooling desserts. East Holwell Street is busy enough. We see the heavy traffic that crosses from the beach road to Route 158 during the summer months. We see the many golf carts and bicycles, not to mention families walking with baby carriages or leased dogs that frequent the street. Even though there are stop signs at both ends of the street and South Memorial Avenue entering Holwell Street, there have been many, many cars and trucks that do not heed these signs. Add to this more roadways entering another housing area and more traffic to what is a desirable neighborhood and you're looking for potential accidents and crime scenes. Yes, we rent during the summer months, but we also enjoy a family week during that time. So we witness firsthand a heavy traffic load. And yes, when our rental season ends, we as homeowners love to enjoy our home the rest of the year and with family on major holidays. We made major improvements indoors and outdoors to our home. When we're not there, we like to think our property is safe and that our vendors can work undisturbed. We've heard that the town likes to keep outdoor lights low or not at all. As a homeowner, we like to keep a light on under the carport when we are not there. There was a time when we had a There was a time when we had a spotlight near the roof of our home directed to the ground pool area, but we were notified to the town that it looked like a helicopter could land there in the night, so we changed its direction. So imagine the lighting that would have to go in this housing area across the street and have it shining on our facing yard and windows when we were told that we had too much light in the night. We had one incident in April of this year when a car was abandoned on our nicely-kept property, and we were told by the police that we would have to wait seven days before it could be towed away. We know the stormwater project is in the works for Old Nag's Head Place. That's another issue that we're facing. Just know that we as property owners are in the direct path of this housing project, and we are opposed to the location. And I'm going to take a break and let the town manager read some of these. If you are interested in leaving, it will not be rude for you to, if the issue you're concerned about has been addressed, you are welcome to leave at this time. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. This letter was sent to us from Alan R. and Judy C. Turner. Dear Mayor, Mr. Garmin, and Town of Nag's Head Board of Commissioners, our names are Alan R. Turner and Judy C. Turner. We own the property at 3610 South Virginia Dare Trail in Nag's Head. We are writing as concerned property owners to voice our opposition to the proposed affordable multifamily housing development site at 100 East Hollowell Avenue, Lot 3351 through Lot 369 and Part 41 in the George T. Stronach subdivision. We do not believe the Hollowell site is the appropriate choice for this project due to the historical value and unique geology associated with Jockeys Ridge. We also are concerned about the lack of communication and limited disclosure of information regarding the Hollowell site. To date, we have not received anything on this proposed development until our neighbors called us on October 1, 2022. They shared with us what was going on and that the selected site was the property directly behind ours. I want the Town of Nag's Head to understand that my husband and I do not have this property just for rental. We rent so we can afford this property in hopes that we'll be able to retire there someday, and we have put a great deal of retirement funds into this property. While the George T. Stronach subdivision, we will be lucky to get what we paid for our house before we did all the upgrades as it will greatly diminish property values in this area. I'm asking that you reconsider this proposal and think of the taxes and income this area brings to the Town of Nag's Head. I also understand that you need housing and that the town is going to receive a huge amount of money for agreeing to this proposal. I only ask that, as good businesspeople, you reconsider the area that you are planning this development. You're in the heart of your beautiful town. If not properly maintained, you will lose your number-one commodity, your tourist season this summer. Best regards, Alan R. and Judy C. Turner. This letter is from Jeff and Pat Pavlak. It was sent to me and also the Board of Commissioners. Good morning, Andy. My wife, Pat, and I are homeowners at 3616 South Virginia Dare Trail, Nag's Head. It has come to our attention that there's a high-density housing project being proposed at the Hollowell Street site adjacent to our property. We want to go on record that we are opposed to this proposed project. Please find the attached letter of opposition to the proposed project stating our concerns. Here's the letter to Andy Garmin, Town of Nag's Head Town Manager and members of the Board of Commissioners. We are sending this letter to strongly oppose the HUD housing project referred to as the Nag's Head site along US 158 between Hollowell and Conk Streets as it is now proposed. We strongly recommend to rezone this 4.7-acre parcel from high-density population to low-density population as the original intended use for 16 individual-family homes. This is consistent with the Town of Nag's Head Land Use Plan dated June 2017. We recently found out about this project that would be adjacent to our property when we saw a surveyor on our property taking measurements in early September. As we have investigated further, we now know this is a proposed HUD housing project to include three brick, three-story buildings totaling 54 units that would be comprised of 10 one-bedroom, three-two-bedroom, and six-three-bedroom units and an external area for picnic tables, benches, grills, and parking for the extensive number of cars that would be needed. While we understand the need for housing and essential workers, we strongly disagree that this will help the Town of Nag's Head given the low-income requirements to qualify for this housing. There's a disconnect between what salaries of essential workers in Nag's Head receive versus the maximum income requirement of this housing. Additionally, as homeowners, we have concerns that we would like to be addressed at future board meetings. What will the impact of stormwater runoff and sewage treatment be? How is the proposed plan consistent with the current character and vision of the Nag's Head Land Use Plan goals I 3.1, which reference preserving our community's distinctive heritage and unique lifestyle by having a relaxed-paced, family- beach community comprised of primarily low-density development and open spaces? How will light and noise pollution be addressed for impact to adjacent homeowners? What will the oversight be to ensure renters are not subletting to charge higher seasonal rates? What is the oversight to ensure the property is maintained once renters qualify to live there? When we purchased our home at 3616 South Virginia Dare Trail in 2012, the primary thing that drew us was the residential historic feel of a family community in a low-density area. We knew then that Nag's Head was something special and uniquely different from any other towns nearby due to the low density and uncrowded roads and beach. We appreciated our views of Jockeys Ridge State Park and the quiet night spent on our back deck watching sunsets. We saved up for many years to purchase this home with the goal of spending many happy years of our retirement here. We do not believe this Woda Cooper project would solve the problem of affordable housing for essential workers in Nag's Head, and it is directly opposed to the intended use of this land as stated above. We request that this letter be read and entered to the public record concerning the HUD housing project in Nag's Head. As homeowners and taxpayers, we appreciate the opportunity to have our voice heard and look forward to having these concerns addressed. Sincerely, Jeff and Pat Pavlak, 3616 South Virginia Dare Trail, Nag's Head. Dear Mayor, Town Manager, and Board of Commissioners, my name is Nadine Johnson, and my husband and I own the property located at 3612 South Virginia Dare Trail in Nag's Head. It has come to our attention within the past week that the property adjoining ours is being considered as a potential site for an affordable housing development. Attached, please find our letter of opposition and concern. Please acknowledge receipt of this letter, that it will be read and entered into the public record for this project. We would like for our concerns to be discussed/considered at future board and town meetings. Thanks for your consideration, Nadine and David Johnson. Dear Mayor, Mr. Garmin, and Town of Nag's Head Board of Commissioners, my name is Nadine Johnson. My husband and I are the property owners of 3612 South Virginia Dare Trail in Nag's Head. While we are writing as concerned property owners to voice our strong opposition to the proposed new affordable multifamily housing development site at 100 East Hollowell Avenue, Lot 351 to 369 and Part 41 in the George T. Stronach subdivision, while we understand and appreciate the need for affordable housing at the Outer Banks, we do not believe the Hollowell site is the appropriate choice for this project. The decision to compromise the area's historical value and unique geology associated with Jockeys Ridge shouldn't be made lightly. We are concerned about the lack of communication and limited disclosure of information to date regarding the Hollowell site approved in the very short term. It seems this has been and it's alarming to think that the plans may have been purposefully kept vague and disclosed to avoid opposition. Below is a list of our initial comments and concerns. Environmental and tourism impacts. We are very concerned about the stress a new development will create on the environment due to the modifications that would be required to support traffic, drainage, septic, waste disposal, the electrical and telecommunications grids, et cetera. Not to mention the prolonged disruption and inconvenience since the area will suffer while potential development occurs. We do not believe that this site, even with modifications, can effectively accommodate the strain. The proposed site is directly across from Jockeys Ridge, the largest living sand dune on the eastern seaboard. This historic state park is a national landmark and is already at risk and fragile. Over the years, the sand dunes have been diminishing, and we are highly concerned that development and oversaturating the population in this area could potentially stress the integrity of the dunes further. One of the primary reasons folks gravitate and tour Nag's Head is that it has maintained its historical character and to visit Jockeys Ridge. We are already challenged by the impacts of climate change and are concerned that the planned redevelopment of the area will further jeopardize and degrade the unique geological features of the sand dunes. In addition, we are concerned that the juxtaposition of multi-story, multifamily buildings will diminish the quality and value of the area. Has the town performed any of the following independent third-party, non-developer-driven studies for the specific location? Environmental impact study, economic impact study, tourism impact analysis, viewshed/light pollution and light trespass analysis? Has the historical society been engaged in the planning for this specific site? Zoning concerns adjoins low-density housing in a state park? We believe the Hollowell parcel should be rezoned similarly and in accordance with the town's established comprehensive plan and land use guidelines. The proposed plan to construct up to 60-plus units in three separate buildings to accommodate up to, conservatively, 120 renters and residents, their potential pets, their vehicles, into a small, narrow, and oddly-shaped partial will put a tremendous amount of stress on the area. We believe there are more accommodating sites that should be considered for this project. Typically, as new development projects are planned, careful consideration is placed to ensure proper vegetated barriers exist and that there are adequate transition spaces between the proposed new development and the surrounding area. The current Hollowell site is highly vegetated and serves now as home to some wildlife, deer, foxes, birds, et cetera, and is a barrier that absorbs highway noise, beach noise, et cetera. The site is very narrow and oddly shaped, pretty much a compressed triangle, with established single-family homes backing up this vegetation. We are concerned that once this vegetated barrier is destroyed, there is no realistic way to offset the destruction, and there is no realistic way to ensure proper transition space is provided due to the size and scale of the proposed project. Historically, our town has been strongly opposed to the development of many hotels. Many folks appreciate and relish the simplistic, old-school feel of a vacation and the cozy, reasonably-sized cottages in Nag's Head. By altering the proposed site, we will alter the demographic who appreciate the quality and character of Nag's Head the most. Although we have not seen the actual drawings or plans for the proposed affordable housing project by any other name, the unit should be considered glorified many hotels. Short and long-term regulatory fraud and abuse concerns. We are highly concerned that the property will not be properly regulated, managed, and maintained in both the short and long term. We are also concerned that the planned site will be especially vulnerable to the high levels of fraud and abuse given its prime location, which will negatively impact surrounding homeowners and taxpayers indefinitely. There are plenty of available alternatives. We firmly believe that there are other available options that are better suited for this development project that should be diligently pursued and explored. Based on internet searches, there appears to be a good bit of available land that would support a development of this size and scope. Can the town please disclose what other options were considered for this program? Thank you again for your consideration of our concerns. Please confirm receipt and acknowledge that our letter will be read in its entirety and entered into public record for this project. Thank you, Nadine and David Johnson. Do you have a few more?
I have a few more. This is from Kimberly Worley. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, I understand that a vacant property that borders Hollowell and Route 158 is being considered as part of the Dare County Woda Cooper project for affordable housing. And as a homeowner of 3523 South Memorial Avenue, I'm contacting you to let you know that I object to this use and hope you will vote against it. I purchased my home in 2019 as a rental property until retirement, and while I understand the need for affordable housing, this use just doesn't seem to fit in with the feeling or charm of the neighborhood, which was my reasoning for purchasing in Old Nag's Head. My concerns are the extra traffic it will cause, the overcrowding of the beach access paths, and the value of the homes decreasing. There must be a more suitable location for this project. Please reach out if there are any questions. Brenda and Albert Metley. We have discovered that Nag's Head is considering an affordable housing project immediately behind our property, 3618 South Virginia Dare Trail. Attached, please find our letter of opposition to this location. We trust that our letter will be entered into the public record and discussed at future town meetings. Mayor and Mr. Garmin, Town of Nag's Head Board of Commissioners, it has come to our attention that the Town of Nag's Head intends to build an affordable housing complex immediately behind our property at 3618 South Virginia Dare Trail. We are writing this letter to express our opposition to this location. We are well aware that housing is needed for additional workers in the Outer Banks. Your location for the site, across the street from Jockeys Ridge State Park, is a very expensive proposition for Nag's Head taxpayers. There's an abundance of land available in Dare County. Why build this in a resort area adjacent to a state park? We are also concerned that the location of this site was never mentioned by the Dare County Commissioners in their meeting to approve the project. They only mentioned the Nag's Head site but not a specific location. There's been zero transparency regarding this location in Nag's Head. In researching the firm that is involved in the management of this project, Woda Cooper, I find essentially a two-star rating. Has anyone researched this company to determine its viability? This being a HUD project, how can you assure that only Dare County workers will be housed at this location? It was our assumption that Nag's Head opposed many hotels and mega mansions to preserve family vacation environment. This location of the project flies in the face of that concept. Is this, did you read? These are the same comments. Did you read this earlier?
I don't think I read that particular letter.
We strongly recommend to rezone this parcel of land to a lower-density population as was the original intended use for individual-family homes. This is consistent with the Town of Nag's Head Land Use Plan dated 2017. We request that this letter be read and entered into the public record concerning this HUD housing project. As a taxpayer, we look forward to having your concerns addressed regarding this issue. And that is the last.
I have one more.
Okay.
Not so fast.
Sorry.
Dear Mr. Garmin, we are property owners in Nag's Head. We recently found out about the proposed HUD project for the lot behind our home. Please share our attached letter with the Board of Commissioners and the Mayor. We would like it read into public record in our opposition of this project. We greatly appreciate your time and consideration. Sincerely, Kathy and Kevin DiBolito, 3614 South Virginia Dare Trail. Dear Township Manager, Mayor, and members of the Board of Commissioners, please let this letter serve as our strong opposition to the development along US 158 between Hollowell and Conk Streets as it's currently proposed. We strongly recommend that this parcel be rezoned to low-density residential in keeping with the vision focus in the land use plans for Nag's Head, especially the historical character area that it is located in, as per the June 2017 Comprehensive Plan. Although we agree there is a need for affordable housing for essential workers, this project is in direct conflict with the very best interests of nearby property owners, the township's comprehensive plan, and Dare County's essential workforce housing efforts. Please find below some of our concerns regarding the housing project. As stated within Section 2.32A Historic Character Development Plan of the 2017 Nag's Head Comprehensive Plan, Table 2.32A, appropriate land uses in the historic character area. This area where this proposed project is reserved for, among other things, single-family dwellings not exceeding 5,000 square feet. Large, multi-residential structures are not even recommended approved listed use for this district. Additionally, it is stated throughout the Nag's Head Comprehensive Plan that Jockeys Ridge has been designated as a unique coastal-geologic formation area of environmental concern, AEC. It is a national landmark of the U.S. interior. The NHCP states that minimal development is paramount, promote low-density residential development and residential uses in a manner that protects and preserves natural topography and vegetation, and to protect the bordering lands from intense development to maintain scenic and environmental qualities. Again, this proposed housing plan is not in compliance with the Nag's Head Comprehensive Plan. It is well-known that Dare County owns lots throughout the county. Why was this particular lot chosen, especially considering it does not comply with the aforementioned Comprehensive Plan? We strongly recommend the zoning for this parcel be rezoned to accommodate low-density residential. This would align for the vision and land use for the historical character area as detailed in the Nag's Head Comprehensive Plan. There has been no presentation of a site plan or elevation images for the community to review. Without presentation of a site plan, neighboring property owners do not have the benefit of being able to do a risk-benefit analysis. For example, it is well-known best practice of the fire service to establish a collapse zone 1.5 times the overall height of the building on all sides. Without being afforded the opportunity to review a proposed site, neighboring property owners are unaware of how this project may jeopardize their property. Any analysis been conducted to show how exterior lighting will affect neighboring environment? As of this time, there have been no information provided regarding stormwater management for the property. What will affect on wildlife and the environment, Jockeys Ridge, schools, the healthcare system, emergency services, and traffic? One of the most dire employee shortages is the healthcare system. As of this letter, there are currently 49 job openings at the Outer Banks Hospital. Based on the hourly wage of these positions and the requirements set forth by Woda Cooper/HUD, it is highly unlikely that people qualified for these full-time positions would be eligible for housing at this location. The same holds true for jobs that the Town of Nag's Head currently has open. The police officers make $50,000. Maintenance workers make between $30,000 and $50,000. This is not solving the essential worker housing needs. Prior to being homeowners, we had been visitors to Nag's Head for many years, camping with our family when we were younger, vacationing year after year with our growing family. We always chose Nag's Head as our Outer Banks destination. We worked hard to reach our goal of purchasing a home in Nag's Head. We worked hard to reach our goal of purchasing a home in Nag's Head with the dream of living out our retirement there. Nag's Head has a charm and quality that is unique, with great history, wonderful parks, and beautiful uncrowded beaches, paths, and roadways. The homes give the feel of a warm beach community. Please help us keep it that way. As taxpaying property owners, we thank you in advance for reviewing our concerns and look forward to them being addressed at upcoming township meetings. Lastly, we request that this letter be read and entered into the public record regarding this project. Sincerely, Kathy and Kevin DiPolito, 3614 South Virginia Dare Trail.
Mr. Liedy.
Is that the last of the comments?
I believe so.
All right. We conclude the public comment session.
With the indulgence of the board, I would like for us to get through, in the interest of the folks who've been waiting, the site plan before we take our break. So that would bring us to the consent agenda. Motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. Brings us to reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Director.
Would you prefer that I go ahead and move forward to the Wellbone Site Plan or go ahead with the director?
Your report is not that long ago, I think.
It isn't. Thank you. Go ahead and pull it up quickly. We'll start off just by talking about the last planning board meeting that was held on September 20th. And at that time, they reviewed a special use permit, site plan review for two items. One is a trade center located on Satterfield Landing in between TWs and the Village Realty Real Estate Management Facility. The other item that they reviewed was various public works facilities associated with the Public Works Facilities Master Plan. Staff to give an update on the North Carolina Parks Accessibility for Parks Grant that we're looking to pursue to part of. At the upcoming planning board meeting, staff intends to give several updates at that time. We're also going to ask that the planning board consider initiating a text amendment to our flood damage prevention ordinance. It requires engineer drawings and V-zone certifications for any work east of NC-12, including replacing a set of stairs. So that type of requirement being associated with just a simple stair replacement seems to be a little excessive at first glance. Might have been an unintended consequence of adopting that LES. So we want to look into that a little bit further. Before we move away from this, I did want to note that planning staff and the planning board have been discussing our existing tree preservation and removal regulations. We had hoped to strengthen those regulations, at least clarify where there was some ambiguity. But before we get too far down that path, I wanted to bring it up to the Board of Commissioners to get any feedback or direction that you may have in terms of how we move forward with that. Perhaps if there's anything to discuss today, we can do that as I finish this up here quickly. The decentralized wastewater management plan and the voluntary septic subscription service. We had our second meeting on Wednesday, September 28th. It was a really great meeting. We had a septic contractor, Jimmy McNeil, and his daughter Cassidy McNeil there with us to go over what this program would look like to a septic contractor, any pros and cons that he would see around that, and also a conversation around liability and what liability the town may assume as part of this type of septic subscription service. So next steps is to have a conversation with our attorney, John Liedy, about liability in that regard. We also talked a lot about increasing education and outreach for the septic health program. The estuary and shoreline management plan, erosion, infrastructure protection, and scale and impact were the top variables that were indicated by the citizen input in the advisory committee when it came to prioritizing the top three sites moving forward to conceptual design. At this point, we do have three areas identified. The first is the Harvey Tract and the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau site. The second is the Soundside Road area, where we have the road and that high-energy erosion happening there. And then lastly is the High Bank area of Nag's Head Woods Road, where the town road is located. There's some erosion in that area and all the way back to the Villas. So it's a very broad look at this. It obviously has to be narrowed down with much more detail, but that's where we're at at this point. Moving down, staff has submitted the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau Tourism Impact Grant, or TIG grant, that went out on September 29th, and that would help support construction of a restroom at Wellbone Park. Like I said, we're also pursuing a part of grant with the AFP Accessibility for Parks Grant application. That's due November 1st. It's based on a point system, which is going to require that we go back through that public engagement that we had previously done for the part of grant. So that's currently planned. A public meeting currently has planned for October 25th, and we'll be pushing a lot more information out about that. The Dune Management Paw Share Program, that period opened up on Saturday, October 1st. The application, information for that, all of that's accessible on our website now. Dowdy Park, we have a movie, The Book of Life. It's going to be shown this coming Friday at 6:30, or once it's dark enough to do so. We're preparing for the holiday markets. The first one is going to be on Saturday, November 12th. And I just want to note that the Art and Culture Committee has been working on a lot of other fun ideas within the town. We're looking at a holiday decorating contest, as well as a flashlight candy cane hunt for kids at Dowdy Park, and the second annual tree lighting ceremony. We're looking forward to that again this year. And lastly, the Committee for Art and Culture is actively working on Phase Two of the Art Mask Project. So we're talking about the various local artists that we would like to reach out to to participate in that program and get three to four more masks out on the beach trip by spring.
Kelly, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The holiday markets, it says that the applications go live on the 13th of October.
Yes.
And the first market is November 12th. Do you know what date those applications are due?
So they're first come, first served. You will go online, and there's going to be four markets. You fill out your application, you indicate the market that... Because not everybody will want to attend all four. So like I said, it's first come, first served. It's usually done within a couple of hours of opening on that day.
Okay. I asked that question. Commissioner Cahoon had noticed in the last month's minutes that there was a mistake with the date there, so the October 13th. Clarify. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize. I'll go check that. That's all I have as far as the report.
Yes, of course. On the tree, since I brought up the trees, I'd like to see the special emphasis on the town's live oak designation. And the reason I brought it up initially was because people were butchering live oaks just for a view shed in the Villas. That, to me, was just not acceptable. They should have talked to the town, because we do have special designation, not supposed to just be butchering the trees. Some of the things that they're considering, I had a concern about. I think Commissioner Brinkley did, too. Like the 25% canopy.
Canopy.
And the...
Yes.
I'm not sure the staff is prepared, or the town is prepared, to keep up with the tree bank, per se. Much as I like the idea, I don't think they're prepared to do that. Just to try to strengthen our ordinance just a little bit to preserve vegetation, not just take it away.
That's great. We'll move forward with that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, she said it for me, but I appreciate that. And what Commissioner Cahoon said about what happened in the Villas, totally wrong. That's... My concerns were just E and H under 26.9, the tree bank, and then the 25% canopy. I think both of them would be very hard to manage. But thank you for your work on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That brings us then to consideration of a site plan submitted by House Engineering for construction of a four-story, 90-unit hotel. We will have a changing of the guard in terms of attorneys.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here. And before Kelly got started, I didn't know if you... The board wanted me just to briefly review what your... The procedure for what you're reviewing today, what your options are, and...
Yes, please.
So just briefly, this is a site plan approval. It's not quasi-judicial, which is a little bit different. You guys are very well experienced in quasi-judicial legislative decisions. This is a legislative decision. It's pursuant to Article Four of the Uniform Development Ordinance for the town. And upon review, and there's preliminary review by Technical Review Committee, staff, planning board, and Kelly will cover all those things. But ultimately, after the presentation day, the board will have to, one, either approve the application, approve the application with conditions acceptable to the applicant, or deny the application. You can table to continue consideration under certain circumstances, or you can vote to return the application to the planning board for additional review for things that you think need to be further reviewed or further provided. So those are your... The general options that you have moving forward today. In terms of approval, I mean, ultimately, there's going to be a review, and if it meets the standards within the ordinance, and you feel it meets the standards in the ordinance, those are your options to take action. If you have any additional questions when you get to the end about any of those options, please let me know. But otherwise, I think you guys have been through this multiple times.
Thank you. Kelly?
Okay. Great. Thank you. I went ahead and brought up the site plan that also has an overlay for the landscape plan that's being proposed, just so as I run through all the items, you have something to equate it to. The applicant for this site plan review is House Engineering. We do have two members of House Engineering available today, David Neff and Brian Sewell. Should there be any questions? I also think they have a presentation they'd like to provide as well. The request is for construction of a four-story, 90-unit hotel, along with all the necessary side improvements to West Bezen Avenue. Property is currently vacant. It is located within the Village at Nag's Head Hotel District, and it is also located in the hotel overlay district. As far as the zoning classification for the adjoining properties, the most notable here is going to be that the property is to the west. This is Rhone Oak Shore subdivision. It's zoned residentially. It's owned our three-year buffer yard requirement here. Then a X flood zone, but our local elevation standard here is nine feet, and they're proposing a first-floor elevation at 9.1, so there's compliance with that. The land use plan has this property located within the general commercial district, and so we do find that the proposal is consistent with that designation. As Attorney Wumble has already noted, this is a permitted use. I would also like to say that Section 9.24.5 of the UDO, it states that in cases where the standards of this section are in conflict with the standards contained in Article 10, the commercial design standards, the more restrictive standard should apply. So as we go through all the standards, I'll let you know if there's a more restrictive standard that we're going to apply over what would normally be required in the overlay district. Lot coverage here, it's broken up into different maximums. So for a hotel between 49 feet and 60 feet, the maximum building coverage cannot exceed 35% of the lot area. Parking coverage cannot exceed 45% of the lot area, and they need to have a minimum of 20% of the lot area landscaped. The proposed building coverage is at 12.9. The proposed parking coverage is at 36.18, and they have about 28.2% of landscaped area. So we do find compliance in this... In this area as well. Because this proposed height here is going to be 60 feet, and their proposed height is 59.1, so we have compliance there as well. With regard to architectural design, Section 10.82 states that commercial design standards shall apply to all building construction or remodeling projects. This project must adhere to the standards that are set forth in Vision II of the UDO Building Design. Staff has reviewed the proposal against the building design standards, building size and dimension standards, height, architectural design elements, site design, and building footprint orientation. A few examples lending to the compliance of the proposed structure are the incorporation of dormers and other roof articulations, covered porch area, screens, all rooftop installations. I actually don't think they have any rooftop installations proposed, or mechanical equipment proposed on this. Residential style, double-hung windows, gable brackets, workable shutters, and the desired column trim. With regard to parking, the required parking for hotels states that it shall provide parking at one parking space for each hotel unit without kitchen facilities. If a unit does have kitchen facilities, the parking requirement is slightly increased. But if you've had the opportunity to look at the floor plan, which we can look at momentarily, you'll see that no kitchen facilities have been proposed. So with that, because this is a 90-room hotel, they would be required to have 90 parking spaces. They proposed a total of 93 parking spaces, and so therefore, parking would be compliant. Section of the UDO Surface Materials requires that 20% of the area dedicated to parking should be provided in permeable surfaces. Looking at the site plan, you'll note this whole area here, adjacent to 158, is being proposed in a permeable surface. That's going to bring them up to 22.9% of permeable surfaces here. The UDO requires that when parking abuts a right-of-way, there has to be a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer, and they have provided that adjacent to the right-of-ways, the Forest Street right-of-way, the Lakeside Street right-of-way, and the 158 right-of-way. We talk about the need for increased buffering along this western property boundary, because it is located adjacent to a residential district. We call that the commercial transitional protective yard. It requires at least a buffer that is 25 feet in width along the entire length of the lot. The buffer shall consist of three rows of plant materials. So as you can see, along this area. Building setback requirements for hotels over three stories states that for hotels west of NC-12, a minimum 25-foot natural or landscape buffer shall be provided along the northern and southern boundaries. This is one of those sections that's not in the hotel overlay. It's actually part of the Village Hotel District, so it's more stringent. The hotel overlay actually doesn't require this, but because it is part of the Village, it has been applied. And as you can see, they do have the 25-foot setback with buffer along the northern and southern boundaries here. southern boundaries here. So we find that that is compliant as well. Interior parking lot landscaping requires that the area specifically dedicated to parking stalls, that 10% of that shall be dedicated to interior parking lot vegetation, and they've provided approximately 12% of interior vegetation, so there's compliance with that as well. Section 10.93, .3.8 of the UDO speaks to the requirement that you would need to either preserve 10% of the site in existing mature vegetation. If you cannot do that, you would need to plant 15% of the lot area in vegetation. You'll see here in this red hashed area that they have proposed to preserve a small area of existing mature vegetation here, but they aren't even counting that towards their total. They're actually going to go ahead and plant 18% of the lot area, 8% of the total lot area, new plantings, which would include the required number of trees, shrubs, plants, and grasses. So we do find that that requirement has been met as well. Of course, if this is approved and it's constructed, a compliant lighting plan need to be provided, the appropriate fixtures, and of course, we'll conduct a lot prior to any type of approvals. The applicant, in terms of their water and sewage disposal, they're including management through onsite wastewater technology using an advanced treatment system in combination with four separate low-pressure disposal fields. The average daily design flow of 11,000 gallons per day requires approval through the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the Environmental Health Section of the town when it is granted, but we know that no development permits will be issued prior to receipt of those state approvals. Looking here at the site plan, you'll see where this, the onsite treatment's been proposed in this area. The town engineer, two points of ingress and egress are shown along Lakeside Drive. It's going to be here and here. The UDO indicates that curb cuts in excess of one on streets other than 158, NC 12, US 64264, or State Road 1243 are allowed if, or that more than one curb cut is desirable to facilitate traffic flow. Staff feels that these two separate access points from Lakeside are appropriate to facilitate traffic flow in conjunction with emergency vehicle access and sanitation truck access as well. We note that loading zone has been provided in compliance with the code. Also note that a traffic impact analysis has been prepared by VHB, and a traffic consultant for the applicant has submitted this to NCDOT for review. I do believe that perhaps NCDOT has provided comments at this point, so Brian Sewell or David Neff can speak to that following this presentation. The existing traffic data was collected in early September of 2022 to review existing intersection turning movements along East and West Lakeside Street from both South Croatan Highway and South Virginia Route 12. The collected data was analyzed based on current roadway geometrics and traffic counts with no proposed improvements recommended at full project build-out. The traffic consultant will be available to present the findings of the report at this meeting, and he will be available via Zoom. Once I conclude my presentation and address any questions that you may have, he'll be prepared to discuss the traffic impact analysis. The town engineer has also reviewed the stormwater management plan. Kind of lengthy comments, but I would like to have them on record for anyone listening or down, looking at this down the road. The proposal is being reviewed under Section 11.4 General Standards for Commercial Mixed Use or All Non-Single Family Development. This includes multifamily development, and it requires development of a property to provide stormwater control measures to retain runoff from a 4.3-inch design storm. Questions have arisen as to how this application should be reviewed regarding stormwater management, and whether the proposal would be considered as part of the Village at Max Head Stormwater Master Plan. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Division of Energy Mineral and Land Resources staff has been contacted to discuss this matter. The application would not be viewed as a common plan of development, and it would not be considered as part of the system, so it is appropriate to review this under the current state and local stormwater regulations. During the review process, a negative easement was discovered to be applied to the property. The negative easement was applied in conjunction with the 1984 approval of the gas station immediately to the east of the subject, shown on the site plan. The verbiage of the negative easement is designed for the purpose of assuring the availability of adequate drainage for the gas station property. The proposed stormwater management design for the hotel proposal accounts for rainfall runoff from the proposed improvements in addition to the gas station property. In total, stormwater management improvements for both onsite runoff and for offsite runoff are designed to manage runoff volume for an approximate five-inch rainfall event, which is in excess of the town's 4.3-inch rainfall event. So it's very technical terminology. For me, essentially, the hotel property is capturing and managing, not only their required 4.3-inch storm event, but closer to a five-inch storm event, they're also capturing from the gas station property. Review of published data to include the National Wetland Inventory Map and onsite soil investigation do not indicate the presence of any hydric soils or wetlands on this site. An NCD-EQ High Density Stormwater Permit will be required. Cockies will need to be provided to the town in advance of issuance of a building permit. And of course, engineer certification will need to be provided to the town in association with construction record drawings prior to issuance of CO should the project be approved. With regard to erosion and sedimentation control, the building permit submission for land disturbing activities shall include the ground stabilization and material handling and inspection, record keeping, and reporting detail sheets that are required by the NCG01 NPDES Construction Program, and the applicant shall provide for a certificate of coverage through the NPDES Construction Program prior to land disturbance activities occurring. A pre-construction conference will need to be had with the appropriate staff prior to any land disturbance. With regard to fire, the project is required to comply with the NC Fire Protection Code, and Deputy Chief Shane Height has reviewed this. He has provided some comments that are essentially just basic code requirements, but has determined that the seminal is compliant with the Fire Prevention Code. The same for Public Works. The Public Works Director has reviewed the proposal and find that the site plan is compliant as it's been proposed. For staff analysis, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the applicable use and development standards as well as land use policies. Staff finds that the proposed stormwater management plan satisfies the requirements of the negative easement via an approved alternative drainage plan, which accommodates the 4.3-inch storm event provoked the proposed hotel development as well as the existing improvements for the gas station property. Article 4, Section 4 of the UDO discusses procedures for subdivision approvals. Records reflect that the current property owner for this hotel site owns lots 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 22, 23, 26, and 27 in their entirety, and a portion of lots 24, 29, 30, and 31. The remaining portion of those four lots are owned by Harrell Adquisitions LLC. Until 1999, this entire tract was in common ownership. To date, while the boundaries are referenced in transferring deeds, there hasn't been a formal subdivision approval pursuant to the requirements of the UDO for these parcels. So we are requesting that if you choose to approve this request, that you place a condition on the approval, that the required subdivision and lot recombination be completed prior to issuance of any permits. With that in mind, staff does recommend approval of the site plan with the notation that the subdivision and the recombination plat be provided in advance of issuing any permits. We would also note that following this, a notation be provided on the site plan should it be approved, noting that the stormwater, that the approved stormwater plan accounts for both the 4.3-inch storm for this site as well as the gas station site. We would use the parcel number, PIN number. And then we'll also follow up with an approval letter from staff with these conditions spelled out, and ask that both be recorded at the registered deeds, so that, moving forward, it will, it will be known that the approved stormwater plan needs to be maintained and continue to manage the stormwater as has been designed. The Planning Board did review this at their August 16, 2022 meeting. They voted 4 to 2 to recommend approval of the site plan. Following the August 16 approval, the Planning Board has revised their stormwater management plan for that additional runoff that we've talked about. And as I noted, VHB has conducted that traffic impact analysis. So I will say that when we presented this to the Planning Board, those items were not included. However, they do seem to be above and beyond what was required at that time.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Kelly, excuse me, two questions. Number one, I noticed on page 14 of the site plan, there's a sign location and it says "Town approved." I didn't mention, I didn't hear any mention of a sign being approved already, or location being approved, or what would have to happen with that?
So we didn't review it for a sign location. A lot of people go ahead and put that on there so that we can determine that the site triangle is being met, the 10 by 70. But prior to any sign being installed, that would need to come in under separate application and would receive a separate review and approval.
And then the other thing, they mentioned breakfast in the middle of the floor plan. No kitchens shown. How would, would those extra spots accompany any kind of kitchen? Or what would, would those extra parking spots that they put in, would that, you know, meet required parking if they did add breakfast?
So I do think they are going to provide breakfast, and maybe they can speak to that. There will be the opportunity for people to grab a little bit of breakfast on their way out, but there will not be a full kitchen, nor will individual hotel units contain kitchen facilities.
Thank you. Commissioner Cugin?
Oh, thank you.
Just real quick, you talked about the more restrictive standard would be applied where applicable, and we talked about the north and south boundaries, and it was applied at 25 feet?
Yes.
What would be the less restrictive, 20 feet or?
Well, so actually, in the hotel overlay, there would be no requirement. It would just be your standard setback. So there would be no landscape requirement.
And I did not, while reading it or listening to the presentation, was there any other restrict, more restrictive standard that was applied here?
No, it was simply with regard to the 25-foot buffer on the market side.
Thank you.
Just for public record, can you elaborate on the stormwater and where it's captured? I've had some people, concerns about that from some citizens, so.
Sure. If it's okay with you, I would probably defer to our town manager, David Ryan.
Certainly.
To discuss the stormwater.
He got a promotion.
Thank you. All right. So there, there's several different stormwater control measures that are being proposed on-site, and they are around the periphery of the site. There is a basin that runs here along Forest Street. To a infiltration basin that runs along the very west side of the boundary. There are culver pipes under each one of these driveway connections, so you have continuous flow and connectivity throughout, all the way to the southern boundary and the right-of-way adjoining Lakeside Street. There is, which then continues on along this side right here, which borders the north side of the gas station. And then in addition to that, there are a improvement for a swale here within the NCDO right-of-way. And don't want to leave out the permeable pavement, which is also considered a stormwater control measure for the site. So, so basically, all along the perimeter of the site, they're capturing runoff and interior to the site with the permeable pavement.
The influence, what type is that on the west side?
So, so this is an infiltration basin. I believe it's on average about two, two and a half feet deep, which that is also bordered by landscape. And, and so this is, this is all infiltration area plus landscaping, so you have the benefit of capturing runoff infiltrating, and then you also have the added benefit of evapotranspiration uptake with that landscape border.
Thank you.
David, there were calculations presented for the existing service station because that stormwater had to be accommodated, and so I saw those calculations on the, on the site plan. Are there any structures that, in other words, that site, you know, I presume is not being modified in any way on that site? So were there any flumes or other structures, or simply pavement slopes that are carrying the water to those swales that are designated for that?
Yes. Let me see if I can find that. Shoot. So primarily, the gas station, there's, there were some elevations that were taken along the gas station and some arrows noting where the directional flow is. So predominantly, from the center of the site, that sheet flow for the western portion of the gas station site flows to the west. And so that will be captured within this perimeter swale right here. There's also a small swale improvement right here to go ahead and capture this corner of drainage. And then there's also a perimeter swale up here on the hotel site, which is capturing some of the runoff that is going to the north. There is a low spot right here at this corner of the gas station, so it's got two available flow pass. It can, within this swale out here between the multi, so primarily sheet flow is how that's going to be managed.
Thank you. Any other questions for David? Then we can hear from the applicant.
If it's okay with, would they be allowed to go ahead and do the presentation from your traffic engineer?
Absolutely. Sure. Yep.
Good morning. Can anyone hear me?
We can.
Yeah, I'll try to share my screen real quick and get the presentation up and running. So you should be seeing title slot to my presentation.
We are.
Okay, great. Happy to be here today. My name is Jody Lewis of VHB Engineering. Thank you, Attorney Wumble, for having us here. I've already talked quite a bit about the site, so I won't bore you too much with that, but it is a 90-room hotel being accessed on West Lakeside Street. The road itself is a residential street, is serving residents to the west and the gas station to the east, and can be accessed by two driveways along West Lakeside Street and accessing US 158. Pavement markings include just crosswalk markings across West Lakeside Street, and the only traffic control are stop signs. the only traffic control are stop signs. We did form a TIA. We scoped the TIA through conversation with NCDOT staff and with town staff, and we arrived that we're going to analyze weekday AM and PM peak hours and weekend peak as well, and analyze two off-site intersections, Lakeside at 158 and Lakeside at NC 12, and the two driveways, obviously. And we performed the TIA to NCDOT requirements in terms of ounces. We did collect data, as been mentioned already, in September, Tuesday, September 15th, and Saturday, September 17th, we were assured by NCDOT that even though we obviously missed the peak for data collection in the summer, that these days would be sufficient to represent the traffic conditions that might be present in the season. To grow our traffic to the analysis year for the build year of 2025, we assume the 1.5% annual growth rate to apply to the existing bonds to build up to 2025. So this is just a screenshot from the TIA that you should have in your hands already of the existing 20-minute counts at the intersections. The numbers without any brackets or parentheses are the existing AM numbers, the numbers with the parentheses are the existing PM numbers, and with the brackets are the weekday peak numbers. As you can see, not a whole lot of traffic coming and going from Lakeside either east or west of US 158 or NC 12. Major, major volumes are obviously along US 158, fourth and ninth. So we, we applied 1.5% for three years to those volumes and generated what we're calling our 2025 no-build on traffic bonds. We arrived that year 2025 for analysis, because the hotel should open in the summer of 2024, so we want one year beyond, just to assure that we're getting full occupancy of the hotel for trip generation purposes. So for trip generation, for a 90-room hotel, I tried to highlight the, the peaks, AM peak during the week would be 38 trips generated, PM peak would be 39 trips generated, and on Saturday peak would be 65 trips generated. So then we distribute those trips. We assign 50% north and south of the site along US 158 and NC 12. We assume 20% would come and go on NC 12, and remaining 80% would come and go on US 158. And that's on the graphic to the left. On the right is the actual traffic numbers being generated by the site. And you can see, not very significant generation of sites from the trip, or trips from the And then we overlay those onto the 2025 no-build numbers to arrive at the 2025 build 20-minute counts. So you see, again, very low movements coming and going from the site, turning left or going through at US 158, and even fewer over at NC 12. So ran the analysis again for DOT requirements, and existing conditions are operating fine, it seems. Lowest load of service is a D. And keep in mind, when we're looking at unsignaled intersections, the level of service is really, is only driven by the delays being experienced by the vehicles on the side streets that are controlled by stop signs. That's why you see a lot of blank spaces on this display. The only F that we're, we realized was the US 158 and east and west Lakeside during the Saturday peak, and that was, as you can see, 76.9, it takes 7.1 seconds up the way for those east and westbound movements. Again, that's pretty typical and was expected. Cueing, I know may be a concern, but the maximum queues were only about four vehicles about 100 feet during the peaks on Saturdays. So again, no significant findings for increased vehicular delays or increased traffic. So these, this is just a shot of the resulting geometrics and lane traffic control that are recommended. Really, no roadway improvements at US 158 or NC 12, maintain the existing single-lane approaches on the side street, no main line improvements are recommended either. And then at the driveways, again, just utilize the existing pavement width to have vehicles enter and exit the hotel. So quick conclusions, no level of service or queue issues were found, a signal was not warranted at US 158 due to the low volumes of traffic on the, on the side streets, and no improvements recommended for the existing roadways either. That concludes everything we've prepared, but I'm happy to answer any question you might have.
All right, questions? I'll start down here with Commissioner Sanders.
None of this, no.
Mr. Cahoon.
Mine is a comment, more of anything. I appreciate the traffic study. I do think that it would behoove both the developer, the town, and DOT to have a stoplight at Lakeside. We've talked about it in the past. I think now would be an ideal time for the three entities to get together and jointly pay for a stoplight. I think it would be important both for the hotel as well as residents of Lakeside to have a stoplight. And I would like to see the town pursue a joint venture with the other entities.
Thank you.
Can I add something to what Commissioner Cahoon said?
Yes.
I am a little concerned too about pedestrian traffic crossing the bypass to the two popular businesses right across the street, and Ice Cream Street down the Beach Road, so I agree with you.
Well.
It's not a condition of approval. It's just that I would like to see us do a joint venture, have all the parties come to the table, and that way nobody has the major impact of a, DOT's already said they're not going to pay for a stoplight. If it was a joint venture, maybe they would consider it.
All right, thank you. I would say for the developer, if they could get DOT to pay a third and us to pay a third, it'd be a heck of a deal, and it would certainly be worth doing. So I agree to that extent. Thank you. Thank you. Then I think that we are done with the VHB discussion, and so applicant, if you wish to speak.
Good to see you guys. Brian Sewell, House Engineering. Hope everybody's doing well. I'm going to start off by thanking staff. Maxi has always taken pride, and I've got a little insight on that, on their employees. And to this, to that fact, I'd like to thank specifically Kelly and the county chairman, Mr. Ryan. They have been a great asset in helping us work through this process for months, not just a few weeks. We have tried our best to go above and beyond what's required for the ordinance. For example, stormwater 4.3, we've designed a 5. The state only requires 1.5. We're, we're collecting the negative easements, the traffic studies. We've tried to go above and beyond, and we actually took a month off because we listened, we heard the concerns about the traffic. So during that month time, we took the, we listened to the staff, the boards, the public, and addressed those concerns. And I would like to thank Jody for being here today. They did a very comprehensive report, and I'd like to thank them for that. I think that this project will be a very good thing for the town in Maxi. It will be a great accompaniment to the Soundside Event Center. It will also provide some fresh rooms, I think that was brought up before, for people to stay in. And it will create employment, which I know we're, we're talking about affordable housing employees, but it will create employment. It will help, they'll be generate tax income for the city. It will also, it will be vendors, things like that. There will be income that will benefit and go back into this community. This is the runoff. This is not a chain that's proposed to come in here. This is unique to the town in Maxi, as shown. Is there anything I can address to the board?
Mr. Sears?
Nothing.
Mr. Cahoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Having seen the presentation and asked our questions, then for the purpose of discussion, if any, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for the 90-unit hotel in at Whalebone with the staff recommendation that we have an approved subdivision plat addressing the portions of lots 24, 29, 30, and 31, and a recombination plat addressing lots 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 22, 23, 26, and 27 be approved and filed at the Dare County Register of Deeds prior to the issuance of any development permits for the Rose Hotel project.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Commissioner Sears.
With respect, can we also add that she wants the maintenance of those swales maintained, recorded in the deed as well?
So staff actually recommended two specific conditions in her presentation. I saw the applicant nodding, so I think they were acceptable to the applicant, is that correct? And that was that there would be a notation on the site plan that their stormwater management was accepting the stormwater from the adjacent parcel, and that that would also be included in the approval letter, subject to the board's decision, and that both of those documents would be recorded. That will clean up the negative easement that was referenced in the staff report, and I believe the applicant was acceptable, agreed to that.
Does the motion remain with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, all right, and the second, and the, all right, very good. Then we have an amended motion in a second. Any discussion?
We'll start anywhere or just?
Yep, we'll start with you.
You know, the attorney at the beginning talked about what our role was here, and it talked about if this application meets the standard of the ordinance. The planning director's comment, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the applicable use and development standards, as well as relevant land use policies. I think the applicant has demonstrated a need and have complied with all of our ordinances and requirements, in some cases gone above and beyond. I'm glad to see that the town had a more restrictive standard on that north and south boundaries that applied, 25 feet. I mean, that's, that's good. So I, I've heard the concerns that have been expressed both personally or in person, and then the emails we received, but I think the applicant has demonstrated that he's met our ordinance. Thank you.
Very, very good. Commissioner Sanders.
I don't have anything. I mean, he has met and exceeded all the town codes and ordinances, so.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Cahoon.
We all have had a lot of comments about this proposal. I know the neighborhood is extremely concerned and should be. That's where they live. But I also want everybody to understand that any plan that comes forward to the town that meets the ordinances, we don't get to put extra conditions on it, we don't get to deny per se.
Correct.
No matter what the race feelings may be, we have to live by our code of ordinances, and if we don't like our code of ordinances, we have to change them. But you don't change them after the door is opened.
Right.
You have to change it before something has been presented, and this site plan meets all of our code, and therefore should be adopted.
Yeah, I agree with that. And before we vote, I, you know, as a, somebody who's also engaged in this, I compliment you on the site plan. I know you put a lot on there, and it is tight, and it is, it is well done, so I, I can appreciate that. All right, then we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye, posed. All right, thank you. The board will be in recess for about 10 minutes or so. All right, the board is returned to, to business, and that would bring us to old business tabled from previous meetings and the traffic control map.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, at the September 7th board meeting, the board received comments from a number of property owners in the vicinity of 4036 South Virginia Dare Trail, which is the location of Maxi Pizza Company, regarding numerous issues, one being parking along the side of the road. The board directed staff to do an analysis of this and make a recommendation back to the board today on whether or not a no-parking area is warranted on the west side of 12 in this area. And so with that, I'd like to introduce our new police chief, Perry Hale, to come and give his analysis.
Chief. Morning again, Mayor, Commissioners. As the manager just stated, I was directly to monitor traffic issues around 4036 at the last board meeting from several comments at the public comment section. During that time, I had recently heard a little bit about some concerns of traffic the week prior to the board meeting, so I already had staff monitoring this from Labor Day weekend up until the date of the memo that I presented for this meeting today, which was the 27th of September. During that time, from September the 3rd, police department staff had completed a total of 41 field contacts, excuse me, for this location at 4036, which does not include normal patrols that Stafford are out on, and if they see something during a normal patrol, they would direct attention to it, that the 41 times was just specifically documented, random times during business hours, which I believe they're open from 4 to 9, Monday through Friday, and then to 10 o'clock on the weekends. During that time, there were one vehicle that was noted that was parked on the west side shoulder. It was not known if this vehicle was visiting the establishment as the vehicle was parked directly into the vacant lot at 4038. There were no other vehicles parked on the shoulder in front of 4036, and then the parking lot was noted that it was not full during the time that the vehicle was parked on that shoulder as well. So if that vehicle was at the pizza joint or just parked on shoulder, visiting somewhere else or not. It was also noted in that contact that the vehicle that was parked on that shoulder did not create any issues of traffic, issues from parking or any site distance issues coming out, exiting, or entering of the establishment at 4036. I was provided a picture when I met with a homeowner previous to this, and that picture had five vehicles that were parked on the shoulders. It appeared it was a black and white picture, and it was taken from a distance. Two of those vehicles could have been parked on the east side of NC 12, which would be in violation of parking on the multi-use path if it was blocked, et cetera. The other vehicles appear to be on the west side, but traffic was not impacted any from those vehicles that were parked there. I even went back to April and pulled calls for service at this address. We had two other calls for service documented during that time. They were not related to any traffic issues or concerns whatsoever. There were other issues that were called upon for the police department to go there for, not dealing with any traffic. Based on the information collected, we have not observed any parking issues that have interfered with any traffic or site distance of vehicles leaving the property. I know we're in the off-season. This could have played a part with the numbers and visits to the establishment, but we were monitoring this during Labor Day weekend. I thought Labor Day weekend was a pretty busy time here, but we had no calls for service or any violations or notice of concern from our staff while they were patrolling or monitoring specifically for park near issues at that address. It's my recommendation that we look into the start of the next season and continue to monitor this, and if issues arise, we make adjustments then, but if the board is inclined to establish a no-parking zone now, we would recommend it be designated 100-foot north and south of the entrance at 4036, and that would be the purpose, excuse me, for the purpose of keeping site distance clear for vehicles entering or exiting that driveway to the business, and this will be consistent with other areas in town that we have recently updated. More than happy to take any questions or?
I don't remember where I'm supposed to start, but I'll start down here.
I don't have any questions.
Questions? Commissioner.
Since I brought this up, I appreciate the report that you gave us. I'm also appreciative of the fact that you have suggested that at the beginning of next season, which to me would be in April, since Easter is our first really busy weekend, that you make that observation and then bring us back some further information, please.
I would agree with Commissioner Cahoon.
All right, great. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, so that brings us to, actually, I think, before we go to the town attorney, and I think that we can do the managers' item.
Were there committee reports?
Committee business.
Yes, committee reports. Thank you. I'll start down here.
Nothing to report at this time, sir.
Okay, right, thank you. Commissioner Cahoon.
Nothing to report on that, but I will inform the town that at the last Nothing to report on that, but I will inform the town that at the last CRC meeting that we gave direction staff to bring back possibly some new rule languages that's going to relate to placement of septic tanks on the oceanfront.
That's great. Hallelujah. Appreciate that. Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Nothing from Jeanette's pier and the planning director gave a update on the voluntary septic subscription service meeting.
Very good.
Planning, planning director also gave an update on the shoreline committee, so.
All right. Very good.
I would mention one additional thing. We had a pedestrian, a first pedestrian planning committee.
Sorry, I forgot that. We did have a pedestrian planning that. We had pretty good attendance out of that, too. We even had one of the ladies that's on there from out of town participate by phone.
Very good.
Had to leave a little early to get back to work, but very good input and participation by all members of staff. David Ryan and Andy gave great background and presentations and I look forward. I think we're going to make some progress.
That's awesome.
We're looking to try to get something together by the January timeframe, you know. And so right now, we're just working on a ranking criteria that we could use to score projects. And then they looked at the list of projects you saw in the CIP and then also what other projects were included in our past pedestrian plan. And we certainly asked them to look at anything that they wanted to bring forward, you know, just based on their knowledge of the community. So I think it'll be a good working group.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. And managers' items.
Okay. So there are three things here. I guess the first item, and all these will be very brief. I'll cover the first item and then David will come and do the second, two items. So legislation for dangerous holes on the beach, this is something that the board has been working on for a while and we just wanted to provide an update that we have received now seven resolutions from various coastal communities. Those would include Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores, Duck, Atlantic Beach, Oak Island, and Surf City, in addition to the town of Nag's Head. So that leaves a total of eight. And so now we would begin the process to try to draft some legislation and, and get with legislators, most likely Representative Hannig. We have been informed that Atlantic Beach has also reached out to Representative McElraff in that area, and that's another avenue to try and get this pushed forward. And so we'll probably be working with Town Attorney John Leidy and the mayor to try to put something together to get to a legislator to start that process. So we, we are moving forward with that.
Great. Thank you.
And then with regards to Public Works, I just wanted to say that David has really been leading this project internally. He's been doing an outstanding job coordinating between the, the design team and our staff to try to make sure that the plans reflect what the staff really needs to have in this new, in this new complex. You know, I just take from all the board's comments so far that what we're really trying to do is provide the resources for staff to, to function well into the future and give them what they need. And so there's been numerous meetings with David and the architect and the engineers to go over the plans, to make sure that the staff in Public Works understands what's in the plans and, and provide input on the things that they need, not only in the building design, but also in the equipment that would be serviced in the building. And so, and I appreciate Nancy and, and putting together meetings with her superintendents to go through everything. And, and there has been numerous meetings, but with that, David will give a brief update on where we are.
Yeah. Thank you, Andy. As, as Andy had said, it's really been a staff-driven process up to this point, getting staff involved, getting their feedback in order to make sure that we address all their specific needs. As we've been going through the process, we have completed the planning board review and you will be seeing this plan for your review at the November meeting. But before we get to that point, that we've been working with the architect to go ahead and finalize the plans and advertise them to bid. It was advertised earlier this week and we anticipate bids to be received on November first. We have been talking with the architect about outreach with contractors. I know that we've had some issues with recent projects for vertical construction and getting bidders to, to bid on some of our recent projects. So we're trying to get out ahead of that. And so the architect has been doing some outreach and he's hoping that we, he can get six to seven bidders on this project. He has been in constant communications throughout the, the process. And from there, once we go through board review, it's acquiring the, the final several permits, one of them being Division Coastal Management can have a major permit that was submitted back in July. Right now, it's in the seventy-five day review process and there is a, also a stormwater management permit. This is one of three that, that remains to be reviewed and final approval issued. But we are on track with the schedule that was presented to you earlier this summer. And then on the back end of it, we do have the financing that we will be going through. But just wanted to give the board an update that we are maintaining our schedule. We are moving forward as, as planned. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I'd just like to add a couple of things just to remind the board. So as David, David mentioned, we're receiving the bids, is it the third or the first of November?
First of November.
First of November. And we have left in a rebid period in case we don't receive three bids. That would give another ten days, I believe. But the board had scheduled a retreat on November sixteenth and seventeenth. And what we were looking at was a full day on the sixteenth and a half day on the seventeenth. The sixteenth would be the day that we would informally look at the bids, but we wouldn't ask the board to actually award the bid until the December regular meeting. That would give us more time to go through them because we'll have just received them. But we also wanted to kind of cover the bids and the, the total cost of the project with the board and get some feedback because there could be a lot of variables that affect what moves forward. With that said, in talking with some of the commissioners prior to this meeting, there may be a desire to ask whether or not we modify the dates of the retreat and maybe Commissioner Coon, if you'd like to.
When we scheduled the November sixteenth, it was, we were due to have a mid-month meeting, which I was not going to be at because we'd never really have a mid-month meeting in November. But since that's only going to be down for retreat, I wonder if the board would consider possibly keeping the retreat on the Thursday, the seventeenth, and possibly having the full day of the retreat on the eighteenth. If that didn't work with everybody's schedule, I understand, but would like to participate in that retreat.
Sure.
But if everybody could check their schedules. I think it's important to do the retreat and I don't want to stop the retreat in any way.
I'm for it. I'm good.
But if the eighteenth would work for, what can we do, the retreat the seventeenth and eighteenth?
Actually, it's better.
Seventeenth would be the half day.
Okay.
So what we were proposing for the seventeenth would be a half day. And what we have scheduled are departmental presentations. Each department was going to give a presentation on their initiatives and, and their strategic plans. And so we would keep that day the same. And then we would cover some of these larger items on the full day, which would include the public works review. And so we would basically just flip-flop Wednesday, Friday for Wednesday.
Very good. Okay. That works.
Could I ask you, David, a question?
Sure.
David, on the public services project, still want to call it public works, sorry.
I know. That's all right.
I know that you're in the middle of a camel review for your major permit.
Yes.
And I know that that's a seventy-five day timeframe for outside agencies to comment. Is that going to screw up your schedule?
As long as we can maintain that initial seventy-five day period, we will maintain our schedule. If we go beyond that, then that can be somewhat problematic.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Right, right now, that seventy-fifth day is November twelfth. So we, we have to go to, we're planning to go to the local government commission in January. We need all of our permits in hand and we need to provide them with all information about a month ahead of time. So having the permits in hand at the beginning of December is going to be critical.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to piggyback onto that, our consultant has been following up with the representatives from Division Coastal Management, just to see if there's any issues with the review. So they've been staying on top of that. We did have a pre-project scoping meeting and, you know, any concerns or comments were, were given at that time and were incorporated into the plan work. So at this point, we don't anticipate any major hurdles or issues that would cause a delay. So we, we just hope that, that nothing comes up during the course of review that will delay our schedule.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep. You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, David.
And then I think David was going to go ahead and just give a brief update on beach nourishment.
Yep. Okay. It's been just over a month since we completed our most recent post-Orion restoration project. It took about twenty-one days in total to go ahead and complete the southern four and a half miles of town. The project was completed on August twenty-seventh with the beach fill operations and then demobilization took place up to two weeks after that. At this point, the only thing that we have remaining is some sand fence and sprigging, which we are currently trying to get scheduled here within the next month or so for that installation. And then that will complete the remaining scope of services. Now, the original planned amount of beach fill was six hundred and eleven thousand cubic yards. We did have a contingency that was, an allowance that we had for additional beach fill. There was an additional amount of two thousand eight hundred and forty-seven cubic meters. And therefore, there was a change order in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for that additional beach fill placement. So before you is a request to amend the beach nourishment maintenance capital project ordinance to go ahead and cover this amount.
How's the beach down there since the project?
It, it's been taking a beating. And I've been down there and we, we've seen some changes in the beach and I know that we've put out some information online to talk about post-nourishment, how the beach can be impacted. But what we have done is maintain the level of protection to those residences down south. So we've achieved our primary objective. We know that Mother Nature is going to move that sand around, but it's, it, it's done its job.
I believe we opened the beach to beach driving today and then the Nag's Head Surf Fishing Tournament starts tomorrow. And so things are, are looking out for that.
Good. Thank you.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the beach nourishment maintenance capital project ordinance amendment number five in the amount of fourteen billion, three hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second. Thank you. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David? Andy?
Nothing else right now.
Okay. All right. Then that would bring us back up to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney and a closed session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, the only thing I have at this point is the closed session. And if you would like me to craft a motion, I can do that.
Yes, if you would, please.
All right. So the board needs to enter closed session as allowed by General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A one in order to review and approve closed session minutes and to keep certain information confidential, as well as pursuant to one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three in order to confer with the town attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege and preserve that privilege, including the town versus Cherry Inc. beach nourishment easement condemnation litigation.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Board will be in closed session. Mr. Leidy, would you report? And then I believe there's going to need to be a motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, so the, the board did take action to approve closed session minutes and to keep certain ones confidential, but to approve the opening of others and did consult with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege, but no other actions were taken.
All right. Thank you. Board members, does anyone wish to, to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we have a moratorium on development in C two for a period not to exceed a hundred and fifty days.
Would that be between?
Between Danube Street and Hollowell Street, which is consistent with the, and the land use plan.
We would schedule the public hearing for the mid-month meeting.
On October nineteenth.
Prepare the advertisement for that.
Yeah. Initiate the process to adopt one, the moratorium.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, for a moment. In light of the past few months, the things we've heard, as well as taking a look at our land use plan, I think it would be appropriate. We've had a lot of concerns in more than one area, maybe that entirety of that, but it's starting to come to light back in August. And I think that this will give us a breathing room for staff to take a look at our zoning map for the land use plan.
Thank you. Any other comment?
And this would affect everything except single and two-family dwellings.
Correct.
Right.
That's, well, I believe that's by statute.
It can only be for non-residential structures.
None. It can only be for non-single-family residence. Okay. All right. Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to the commissioner's agenda and I'll start with Commissioner Coon.
Thank you. We had this discussion some time ago about electric bikes and it didn't become obvious until recently that what we all considered electric bikes have changed. Technology is growing and the bikes are bigger, they're faster. And based on my observation, as well as a lot of comments on my end of the beach, because I, that's where I live, they're huge bikes, they go extremely fast. They are almost running over people on the pedestrian path. They're, they're, they're fast. They're not a bicycle that we think or an electric bicycle or electric scooter or anything like that. They're big tires, they're big bikes. Cars coming out of driveways can stop and look in one, look in a direction, look in another direction and when they turn around, get ready to pull out, that electric bike is right there, even though it's way further down the street when they first took a glance at it. So they're going faster than an average bicycle. And I'm, I'm not talking about one fifty-eight, I'm talking about our multi-use paths. And I think we need to address it sooner rather than later.
You, you have any suggestions, what you'd like to see?
We have a speed limit on our bike path. And I'm not trying to sit patrols or anything else like that. I think I'd like the police department to take a look at these electric bikes, bring us back some information so that we can be aware of what we're doing, that we can be educated and see what's next steps we need to take.
I don't, I don't disagree. They're being operated in a very different way than I think you sort of envisioned.
I know you had expressed concern that we didn't want to get into the electric bike police kind of thing and I, we all agreed with you as well. But from that conversation to today, the evolution has appeared.
I think it expands to motorized vehicles, electric motorized.
It has changed. It was one thing to see golf carts on the bike path, but now it's another to see these vehicles that are whizzing by. And you've got a lot of people with strollers and a lot of people with children walking and I'm not sure they can stop.
You can't stop for the car that's backing out that doesn't see him either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was right up around you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Then do you have any additional items?
One, for all the people that came and spoke about Jockeys Ridge this morning on either side, thank you very much. I would like to see the park exercise more public input and involve not just their, I'm glad to see they're involving their friends, but there are a lot of people that care. but there are a lot of people that care about the park. The town has usually had really good relations with the park and good communication. I think that's gone by the wayside in the past few years, but I would like to see that reencouraged because they have in the past submitted plans for the town to review. It'd be nice if that were to occur, but I think there just needs to be a lot more openness and community involvement in this process. That's it for me.
Thank you. Stay on that end, Commissioner.
All right. I'd also like to thank all the public comments today. Here, citizens is nice. We do it frequently. Sometimes we don't want to hear it, but it's always nice. And also, I don't know that anybody's given town staff Kelly, Kate, Connor, and Andy, the mayor, props for their presentation of COA.
David.
David, there's their, because that was a great presentation, good representation of what the town's doing behind the scenes.
That's very good.
We were, we were working on a press release. It probably needed to come out a few days ago, but we've got something drafted that we'd like to get out. And it's going to be a joint release with CSI, just going over what happened and what we're trying to do. So.
Thank you. Similar to what the other commissioners have said, thank the people that came out today to speak. I hear their concerns, and also the people that took time to send emails, which were right into the record. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
It's good for the community to get involved. That's what we're here for.
Thank you. That brings us down to the mayor's agenda. And before I forget, there are three items there, but there is one other thing that I have been observing and that I would like to speak to, just real briefly while we're in open session and speaking to the public. We have an election coming up, and Nagshead used to be, that town hall here used to be the polling place. I, and I think Commissioner Coon has expressed, would like to see them come back to the town from the school now that COVID has passed. But there's a lot of discussion in the public and has been in the media about poll workers, accusations that somehow the process is rigged, that they are not trustworthy, that they can't be trusted with their elections and the machinery of elections. And I had a longtime employee, Jane Brown, who used to live in the Coes. And every election, I gave her the day off, and I think probably a day and a half because it was set up and break down. And she worked the Nagshead polls. And I have a neighbor today in Nagshead Acres, who has been a longtime poll worker. And it's gotten to the point where, you know, people are reluctant, and I would understand that, you know, reluctant to go volunteer and work because it's a volunteer job, to volunteer and go work the polls because certain segments of the public just are angry, and they don't think you can be trusted, and they think somehow you're corrupting the process. And so I would like to say, I've always trusted the polls in Dare County. I think we have quality workers there. They are our friends and our neighbors. And they do, they do great work, and I would like for them to know that they have my support, certainly for the work that they do, and hopefully your support as well.
You're here.
Absolutely.
They are our friends. They deserve our support.
Yep, very good. Thank you. That brings us to consideration of a resolution to support the bridge to replace the Alligator River Bridge. This has been brought up to us before. We know that a lot of cities have used that bridge going back and forth to work. It's a critical link down, and therefore for us, folks on both sides of the bridge. There was a resolution recently, which, and our resolution addressed this, but there was a grant opportunity from the federal government for that bridge to be replaced. And so it was timely that we would adopt a new resolution and forward that to all the appropriate parties in the U.S. Department of Transportation and our representatives in Washington in particular, and encourage them to finally put the money forward for this bridge to get replaced because the conventional financing mechanism that we have is not going to get there. And so I bring this back to you. I'm not going to read this today. It's similar to other resolutions that we have had in the past. And so having seen that, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? All right, thank you. The Alamo Marl Association, I am the delegate to the Alamo Marl Association. They have a meeting on October 20th, 2022, that's over in Plymouth. And I will be out of town on October 20th. And so my purpose here today was to ask for a volunteer, if anyone was available, to attend that meeting in my stead. It began, registration begins at 9:30 a.m. I believe those meetings usually go until, yeah, sometime just after lunch.
I wish I could, but I'll be in Raleigh.
Okay. This would be a good opportunity to also trumpet the bridge, you know, the Alligator River Bridge. I'm sure that will be a topic of discussion there, certainly.
If nobody else is available, I am free, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
October 20th.
Thursday.
Yep. If you are willing.
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to.
Commissioner, all right, then I would move then that Commissioner Brinkley be appointed as my, as our delegate to that association meeting.
You need a vote?
I need a second, yeah.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you, Kevin. I really appreciate that.
Sir.
We've already dealt with the closed session to consider minutes. Do we, do we need a report? Did you report that?
I did. I did.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Very good. That brings us then to other business. Hearing none, and that brings us to recess to Wednesday, October 19th at 9:00 a.m. for the mid-month meeting. And I will be absent. I apologize.
So moved.
I have a motion to recess. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you.